Well, thank you for coming, everyone. And if you could please join me, I'm going to call the meeting to order in the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Irene, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz, absent. Vice Mayor Turner.
Present.
And Mayor Walter.
Present. And let the records reflect that Councilmember Cruz is on an excused absence. The first item on the agenda is a report of a closed session. We had none. A agenda review?
Mayor, members of council, item number eight on your agenda tonight regarding conversion and expanded use of an existing private at-grade emergency easement for the AVR project is being requested to be removed by the developer. The developer is currently working on an alternative to an at-grade crossing as it was outlined on that agenda item and plans to bring back that item in the future. So we're recommending its removal from the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Are there any objections to removing that item? Okay. Thank you, David. Next item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda may do so. Please understand that the city council can take no action on these items, but please feel free to come forward and share with us.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. My name's Rob Kozlowski. I live here in Cloverdale. And one of the things I want to talk about was the all-electric reach codes. And in particular, I just got a nice email from Jeff Cypher. He's CEO of Sonoma Clean Power about an hour ago. And I was asking him what our Sonoma Clean Power's plans to mirror SMUD, that's Sacramento municipal utility districts. They have an excellent solution to provide utility-scale solar instead of forcing rooftop solar PV systems on every new homeowner as part of the all-electric reach code. And in light of what's been going on there, it's only been seven weeks since the code was officially, I guess, being enforced. Jeff writes, and I quote, "SEP is researching SMUD's approach now. Two years ago, we proposed a method for a developer to prepay the premium for Evergreen rather than install rooftop solar. It works out to be about one-third the price of rooftop solar and might even be cheaper than the SMUD approach. But the CEC doesn't have an easy path to approve that yet. Stay tuned." So I've been pushing for this, that solar should be a voluntary thing to reduce your electric bills, not mandated to drive up the cost of homes. And while this has been going on, I've been trying to deal with the CEC to identify correct numbers on what it costs to add to homes, not the numbers they're publicly providing and then presented by other folks to the council. So I just wanted to mention that and encourage the city not to adopt all electric reach codes until we get some more of the numbers and what the costs are, especially in an environment where we're trying to make new housing more affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else wishing to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close that public comment section. And we're going to move to the first item, which is a presentation by the Cloverdale Health Action. And David, is this yours or Kevin?
Mayor, I'm happy to introduce this item. The item tonight is a presentation related to the Cloverdale Health Action Committee. Joining us tonight is Ms. Rebecca Ennis. And Rebecca is going to provide an overview of what's referred to adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, in engaging our Cloverdale residents. And again, this is again tied to the Health Action Committee and discussion about bringing healthy initiatives to the city of Cloverdale. So without further ado, I'd just like to invite Ms. Rebecca Ennis to come to the dais. And she's going to provide a presentation overview of this concept of ACEs.
Okay. How do they work? All right. Technology. Okay. All right. Thank you so much, council, for allowing me to join you this evening. And I realize time is kind of limited, so I will try to be brief. But this is also what I feel to be kind of just an update of what Health Action Cloverdale has been doing as well, because as you are aware, the council has supported us financially. And so this is some of the labor of the work. And so I've appreciated the time that I've been able to share with you individually what's been happening. But I would like to go on record in saying that, Vice Mayor, I haven't had an opportunity to sit down with you individually, and I just want to make sure that I do that at some point. So whether or not that's a beer and a cigar, I don't know. But I don't even know if you're into that. I just say.
You caught it, Becky.
He is? Okay. Great. Super. All right. So why am I here? So my goal here this evening is to, again, share with you about Health Action Cloverdale, to be able to inspire you, hopefully. And knowing that the community is looking at some very complex issues currently around homelessness, the next unfortunate disaster, or PSPS, which in and of itself is a disaster, I just want to share with you that the principles of Health Action are rooted in a commitment for transformational change. Our goal is to achieve equity and better health outcomes for the residents of Cloverdale. And that's very broadly defined. There's three buckets that that fits in: long and healthy life, educational attainment, and a sustainable standard of living. So those are very broad brushstrokes. But I'm here to introduce you to the impact of ACEs and also the self-healing communities model, which I believe, through various conversations that I've had with members around the table at Health Action, residents in the community, I believe that these will transform how we provide health and human services and change the narrative. So it might seem relatively obvious, but the thinking that got us here is not the thinking that is going to get us out. And so whether we're discussing how to address homelessness, or like I mentioned, the PSPS's, we have to ensure that we're thinking differently about these problems. So just as an example, I sat in a workshop just yesterday, and it was brought forth by St. Joseph's Health, and it was a two-year resilience outlook. What have we done? What's been the impact? What are recommendations? It was a time for a group of people to come around the table, and there were about 100 people in the room. And, you know, what occurred to me at one point when there was a quick pop-up about, hey, what kind of collaborations do we already have based on these instances? And so many people raised their hands, and we had a huge list of about 20 collaboratives and organizations that have come together now under another umbrella and another name. And I got to thinking, while that's all great, of those 20 things and organizations listed, we now needed a coordinator for the coordinators, right? So we've scaled up in terms of the collective impact that we can make, but I don't know if we've quantifiably changed anything other than getting larger, or if we need to really look at this qualitatively and say, what does collective impact mean when we're talking about these kinds of things? So I am going to suggest that ACEs has a lot to do with how we're going to look at it in a better way. So just real quickly, oops, on the science. Just real quickly on the science. So ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, is a term from a major study done by the CDC and Kaiser Permanente that showed the correlation between 10 major childhood experiences and then the three domains in abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. And those things correlated with very many, a lot of serious and mental health outcomes. So then this is a snapshot, real quickly, of possible risk outcomes that would happen. There's a lot I would love to share with you about this, but again, we're kind of constrained for time, so I'll just have you take a look at those on your own. But real quickly, just a couple figures for you, and you can read that to yourself. I think what's interesting most that popped out for me was that those that have experienced four or more ACEs in their lifetime, 30 times higher to likely attempt suicide. And as it pertains to the last bullet point, I actually have some local data. You know, the summary measures of health that was conducted in 2015 to 2017 actually stated that the life expectancy for Cloverdale residents, Healdsburg and, sorry, Geyserville and Windsor, there's like about four years less life expectancy for residents in those as compared to, say, Sebastopol or West County or Healdsburg. So that's just some local data for you to go along with that point. So the number of ACEs a child predicts their challenges during life. And so consequently, the more that you have as an adult, the more health, behavioral, and economic problems you're then likely to have as well. And the impact of ACEs can be passed down. So this is a term called epigenetics. It's not just the blue eyes, blond hair kinds of traits that can get passed down. It's also behaviors and different things that have changed our nervous system and our brains. One that I like to use often is alcoholism. I think that's a very good example of something that can be passed through the families, not necessarily genetic. So some key findings of that study. ACEs significantly increases the risk of serious health consequences, as I mentioned, including nine out of the 10 leading causes of death. So those are things like stroke, cancer, cardiovascular disease. It's highly prevalent. 61.7% of adults have experienced at least one ACE. And 16.7% have experienced four or more ACEs. So those kinds of things on an individual level, if anyone then is living within a community, you can see how that quickly kind of expands and impacts the community. And you have then, on top of that, adverse community experiences. So community trauma like racism, bullying, fires, all of those kinds of things. Am I inspiring you yet? Probably not. No, this is the yucky part. So across the lifespan, this is just a quick, easy diagram. If you start from the bottom of the pyramid, moving up, you have preconception and all of the things that come from behind a person in their history, all the way to the top of the pyramid and death. So that is just kind of a nice, easy diagram to follow. But now let's kind of turn the corner a little bit and get a little bit more positive. So there is new science here that supports new solutions. And so we're going to use this science to create better and cheaper ways to solve some of these complex problems. We can treat both children and adults and help them heal, and we can prevent negative impacts of trauma and adversity. So from our research over the last 20 years, we're gaining new understanding of the impact of adversity and resilience. This new science gives us insight into why people do what they do or don't do. And with that insight, we can better work with our residents, and we can prevent bad things from happening. So I believe it's with this information that we're going to change the narrative. And this is an idea of moving from the blame and shame. And instead of asking what happened, we ask what's happened to you rather than what's wrong with you. So we kind of shift. And so this is a quick story. I'm reading a book by a gentleman named Jim Warner, author in all sorts of leadership roles. And he tells a story in the book that I'm reading about being a summer camp counselor. And in this particular camp, they invited an elderly community from a very urban area to come and spend some time with them. And one of the women that came to this camp, elderly woman, she would always rush the meal line when it was time for breakfast, lunch, or dinner, so much so that she would knock over other individuals that were with walkers or canes and just go through the line, pile as much food as she can on her plate, and then take it back to her table. And she would do this every day, to the point that then the staff then had to physically create a wall with their bodies to prevent her from then rolling past the people that really, truly needed assistance. And then on top of this, she also did not shower. So by the end of the week, she smelled really badly. And then the female counseling staff threw her into the shower and had to force her to shower. And so Jim describes this situation, and he describes how he came into confidence with one of the other male campers that came from this community and was sharing about this woman. And the man turns to him at some point and says, "That's my wife." And he explains how that everyone has always told him to leave her, to get on with it, too many problems. And he proceeds to roll up his sleeve and show an arm tattoo of a number in his arm and then says, "And my wife also has a tattooed number on her arm," indicating that they were members of a concentration camp back in Hungary at the time. He explained that she had experiments performed on her, parts of her brain were removed, and that she survived this. And so Jim, of course, now having his perspective changed on this woman, and rather than saying what's wrong with you, learning what happened to her, they shifted how they handled their entire camp: meal programs, showers, imagining from her perspective what it must have been like then to be forced into a shower after now knowing that she lived in a concentration camp. So just a quick story that I thought was very poignant to this kind of idea. So what can we do? Solutions have to consider and respond to what has happened to a person in order to be effective. So solutions created by and with community members are more likely to work, especially in the long term. So I was very encouraged to see so many community residents at this most recent advisory group meeting around the homelessness and homeless community here in Cloverdale and hoping that they'll be able to be more involved in that process. A person's ACEs impact their brains and their behaviors and their health. So if ACEs is not considered and addressed, then solutions will not be a good fit and/or a person's actions can possibly be misunderstood. So in essence, we might not be asking the right question. So where do we start? So this is the self-healing communities model. This model was developed, implemented, and evaluated over several decades, as I had mentioned earlier, in the state of Washington and is now being implemented in other parts of the country as well. So what is the self-healing community model? Well, the community turns from a culture of illness, conflict, and despair to a culture of self-healing. When communities develop the capacity to shift typical cultural patterns, individuals within the community gain knowledge and skills, and the community as a whole becomes a learning organization. And it's characterized then by a rhythm of engagement that invites flourishing, a continuous, steady, strong, strong growth into well-being. So this definition kind of encompasses that. And the key point here is that folks are defining things as they would see them for their children. So that's kind of the future thought. What would you want and aspire for your children? Real quickly through the bullet points. So self-healing community model, it develops a strong network that promotes much greater collaborations across sectors. And again, just not talking quantitative, talking qualitative as well. Empowering local leadership, nurturing sector leaders to think about whole systems and just not their part of a system, which I think is fairly typical nowadays. Uses data to decide how and where to focus efforts and to learn from what is working. And makes visible changes that help to instill a real sense of hope in communities that may have given up on the prospect of a better world for their children. And I think that that hope is key. I really do feel like if you cannot have people see themselves on the road, see themselves as part of the journey to that self-healing community or a better world, then no matter what you try, it will not work, even if it's not, even if it isn't the self-healing community model. There must be hope in anything that you try. So just real quickly, using an understanding then of the impact of ACEs and their consequences, we can identify local leaders, support them to have deep conversations about what changes they would like to make, support them to develop new ways of work in changing our status quo mindset, and then make time or room to review, reflection, testing, modifying, and then trying again. So this isn't about bringing new programs and resources to Cloverdale. This isn't about adding one more thing to our to-do list. This is about changing how we think about our work. And because of our understanding of ACEs, it's how we then support our communities to develop better solutions. And just real quickly, that is, those four bullet points, that is kind of what Health Action is meant for. It's meant to incubate and grow some of these ideas. Bless you.
Bless you.
So just really quickly with the graph. I only have a half, oh, you guys are great. So I think the key here to just notice in this graph, as you can see, the green is the self-healing communities when they're using that model, and then the red is when they're not. And for the folks that can't see out here, there are age groups at the bottom of that graph. And I think the pivotal point, as you can see, is the 18- to 24-year-old age group. You would expect to see a dramatic decline in communities that use this model, because if they have them in place, and remember, we're talking years and years, so maybe 10 years at least, then the first cohort to start showing some of these changes would be your youngest cohort. And then you would move on from there. I also brought just a couple of graphs from the state of Washington. And again, these are just on various topics, but there were so many other areas that they worked on, the green line being Calitz County, which is where most of this work has taken place, and then the red dotted line being Washington State. So we have child injury that led to hospitalization, again, over a period of roughly 10 years, suicides and suicide attempts, infant mortality, filings for juvenile offenses. That was the last graph on that page. And so I think what I'm suggesting is just a few things here on this slide. This is where I feel like city council can come into play in the community of Cloverdale. These are suggestions. There's a lot we can do without requiring new resources if we just change how we do business. Some of these things actually are already being done. I know City Manager David Kelly's already incorporated some of the resilience language in the upcoming meeting this Friday, so that's very encouraging. But this is really important if we consider the small city that Cloverdale is, our limited resources here and budget. I would imagine that we would want to be able to think of business differently, especially when we don't have necessarily any new money or new organizations coming in. So I'm not asking you for money. I'm asking you for time. I am asking if we can schedule a one-hour training where I can get into a little bit more of the pragmatics, the logic model, the six steps in terms of how to really evaluate if the community is asking the correct question and to drill down then to the correct answer. And so I also then provided just a few other resources as well that you're more than welcome to look at on your own. But again, I'm very excited to be here. I just, you know, want you to know that you're the first city council in the county of Sonoma to hear this presentation. So if anything, we are on the map for that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Becky. Councilmembers, any questions before I open it to the public?
I guess I have a question.
Sure.
What was the source of this?
So it's a culmination of a different, like, a lot of different resources here. But my presentation, I worked with a woman who works directly with Laura Porter. Laura Porter is in Washington State with ACEs Interface. So she was a part of that original CDC-Kaiser study, and this is her consultant. So she and I worked on this presentation together.
Okay, great. Yeah. Great, thank you.
Any questions from the public? Okay. Seeing no one, thank you. And David, I think this should probably go to a subcommittee first, maybe for discussion. So which subcommittee would you recommend?
I would probably recommend, if council would like to refer this to a subcommittee, maybe Finance, Admin, and Police would be the appropriate subcommittee. Alternatively, we could request for a formal presentation, maybe at Health Action, and we could apprise councilmembers of the date. And if more than three of you wanted to attend, we could work with our city attorney and city clerk to schedule it as a special, as a special meeting. So that might be just an alternative for council to consider. But happy to refer this to a subcommittee if that's the preference.
So Becky, we'll, staff will get back to you with the time if we decide to move forward with the presentation. But thank you for coming this evening. I also just wanted to point out that former councilmember Carol Russell sent an email to the councilmembers supporting this project. And Carol's been a longtime representative to the Health Action Council, and she's very supportive of the program. So Irene, if we could just make sure that's part of the record, please, the minutes. Jason?
And just, I really appreciated this presentation, and I think it's really cool that not only do we move forward in addressing the symptoms of homelessness and adverse child events, but we're also looking to address the root causes as well. And I look forward to that beer and cigar.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to Student Liaison Report.
All right. So the first thing is there is a definite date for Mr. Eagle. The Mr. Eagle pageant, for those of you who don't know, it's when a bunch of high school senior boys volunteer to go up on stage and do dumb stuff.
It's for a good cause.
Yeah. Yeah, it's for a good cause. It's scheduled on March 5th at 6:00 p.m. And they will also be selling senior year, or senior t-shirts there for, let's say, class of 2020 on them. And those t-shirts, if anyone decides to buy them, the funds raised go to funding the senior trip. And there is also another project to fund the senior trip is a car wash that is happening on March 7th at 10:00 a.m. And that's all I have to report right now.
Thank you. Next item is the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar will be, everything on the Consent Calendar will be considered with one action unless a council member or member of the public would like an item pulled to be discussed separately. Councilmembers, staff, would you like to pull any item in particular? Members of the public, anything? Okay, so I'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the item.
A second. Okay. Could we have a roll call, Irene, please?
Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Thank you, yes. Next is Written Communications. I guess there's none at this point. Public Hearing, Affordable Housing Agreement, and that's with Kingdom Development.
I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one because that's right next door to my property.
Okay, Mary. Thank you. So Kevin, I think this is your item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, councilmembers, this item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements necessary to further the city's partnership with Kingdom Development and the Wallace House for the development of Cherry Creek Affordable Housing Project at 520 South Cloverdale Boulevard. We've been working with Kingdom, Wallace, and Myers-Nave over the past few months to iron out all these agreements and deal points that are contained in them. Once these are executed, it will give Kingdom site control, which is really, it's critical for them in seeking other funding sources, which is what we discussed at a previous council meeting, that we're expecting Kingdom to beat the bushes and look for other money to help pay for the project. And before I just briefly talk about what the agreements are, I'd like to point out we will be back before the council in the next few months to talk about a couple other things. One is the relocation plan, and that's a plan that Kingdom has put together that really talks about where the folks who are living there now will go during the duration of the construction of the project. Also, the management plan, which was requested by the council. We have both in draft form, but we will bring those forward in the next month or two. We wanted to get these items before the council as soon as possible, again, so Kingdom could have site control and move forward. So the first thing on the list is the Reuse Report, which is a requirement of Health and Safety Code 33433. It also includes the 33431 report. And this is kind of a, this is a requirement when the, tying back to former redevelopment agency. It's required when the agency wishes to sell or lease a property. And this is the portion of the item that is the public hearing. So we had to publicly notice the adoption of that report. The next is the Affordable Housing Agreement, and this really dictates how the project will function once it's complete. Talks about the number of units, the level of affordability, the rental restrictions, and the length of restriction of affordability, which is 55 years, household income, management requirements, also the reporting requirements. So the applicant or the manager would be required to submit a report to the city every year describing who lives there and how they qualify under the low, very low, and the various units. So... units as they're described for income. The next one is the disposition and development agreement, and this really has to do with the city's financial contribution to the project. Includes the long-term lease of the site and the $1.9 million grant that we've been talking about in unspent bond proceeds that we need to spend on affordable housing. Also covers things like insurance, indemnification, construction project, and describing the project as prevailing wage. The last agreement is the pre-development loan agreement, and we have discussed this in the past. The amount we settled on was $250,000. It's a 3% interest rate. This loan is typically used for things like architectural design, engineering, legal fees, things like that, that sometimes projects have trouble coming up with upfront. The way it's structured is that it will be a reimbursement basis, so they will submit invoices to us, and we will reimburse Kingdom for their expenses, up to the amount of $250,000. That's coming out of our Inclusionary Housing Fund. So, our recommendation is that you adopt the attached resolution that approves all of those agreements that I just described, as well as the 33433 and 33431 reports. I know Kingdom and Wallace House are both here tonight, so if you have any questions, let us know.
Thank you, Kevin. Council members, do we have any questions of staff? I just have one, Kevin. Could you talk just a little bit about that redevelopment loan agreement? We came back with the 250, but help me understand what the original request was.
The pre-development agreement?
Yes.
I think the original request was, I can't remember, it was somewhere around...
300?
400.
475.
I believe there's about $500,000 in that account now, and of course, that's the money we collect from new development contributing to affordable housing. Again, we do use some of that money to pay for staff and other expenses, so we settled on 250, leaving some money in the account.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with the balance to cover our future expenses on that.
We are. We discussed it, and this is where we settled.
Okay. I'm going to invite anyone up from Kingdom Development to say anything if they want. Otherwise, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Council members, is there any questions for the developer on this project? Okay. Anyone from the public want to address us on this item?
Mayor, if I can, just on the record, just request to formally open the public hearing.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing officially. So, if anyone has any questions, please come up to the podium and state your name and share with us your questions. Seeing no one, I'll close that public hearing section and bring it back to the council members if somebody would like to offer the resolution.
I'll offer the resolution.
Oh, I will second.
Actually, do I need to go through these one at a time, Jose?
If we could, sorry, if we could read the title of the resolution.
Of each, of each resolution?
There's actually just one.
Oh, there is just one, I'm sorry.
The staff report just points out all the things that that resolution is doing.
Thank you, thank you. I think I'm confusing it with something that's not on the, no longer on the agenda. So, I would like to offer the resolution by title only. "A Resolution of the City of Cloverdale Approving a Reuse Report Required by Health and Safety Code Section 33433 Authorizing the Execution of a Disposition and Development Agreement for the Lease of Real Property to Cherry Creek Village LP. Adopting Findings in Connection with Such Lease Approving Pre-Development Financing for the Project and Authorizing Execution of Documents in Connection with Such Disposition and Financing."
I will second.
Okay. Irene, could we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham's recused, and Mayor Walter.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming all the way up to Cloverdale. We appreciate it. So, you had some good weather today anyhow.
We'll go get councilmember.
Yeah. Mary Ann? Okay, well, you know, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the rest of the agenda. There's, oh, here she comes. Let the records reflect that Councilmember Brigham is back on the dais. Next is subcommittee reports, and council members, you know, what we usually do is we state when the next meeting is. I'm going to ask that we forego that this evening. We can all pretty much read when it is, and it's a public record. But I would like to come back to subcommittee reports when we talk about future agenda items. So, city council reports, anything?
I submitted mine in writing.
Legislative reports, anything?
There's nothing, David.
Thank you. City managers, city attorney reports.
Mayor, council members, I just want to report that on Friday, February 28th, we have a steering committee team meeting scheduled at the Cloverdale Citrus Fair from 9:00 to 11:30. This is part of our resilient Cloverdale initiative. The intent on the meeting is to really start engaging our community partners and our nonprofit organizations on, involving how we are going to better respond to future emergency events and become more of a resilient community. There will be an update from Chief Ferguson on his work updating the emergency operations plan. There will also be a brief update by our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, as well as our consultant, Bob Lago-Marcino, on the current planning effort to prepare a local hazard mitigation plan and how those two relate together with our resiliency effort. There will be also a discussion which will tie into our hazard mitigation planning regarding hazard assessment within our community. You know, and obviously, there's one that's developing right now with the coronavirus, so I assume that'll be, that'll come up. But that hazard assessment is kind of a key planning process to help us develop a resiliency plan. So, that's an effort. The community is invited and welcome, and we encourage participation. We hope to see the council there if you can make it. And that will be, again, an important kind of first meeting of the steering committee to, you know, continue this planning effort.
Thank you. Any questions, council members? Okay, future agenda items, anything from the council?
Well, if we're going to go over subcommittees, I know that we are going to have to change the date of the Finance Administration of Police. It was my mistake. I have two conflicts that come up on Thursdays, and so, I think, at the meeting tomorrow, we're going to be discussing, you know, alternate dates, so we'll have to just keep the public posted on that subcommittee.
And that's fine.
But it will have to come to the, back to the council.
For approval.
For approval, so.
Mayor, council, it's, this is kind of an opportune time to, because ultimately, if the direction is to change the meeting date or the meeting time or both, ultimately, we'll have to bring that back for council consideration by resolution. You know, if there is any other direction to update, you know, the meeting times or dates for the other subcommittees or the council-appointed members to those committees, you know, this might be an opportune time just to look at that and update it accordingly. So, when we bring it back, it's reflective of ultimately the council's input.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Very good. That is good. And could you just follow up with an email? Councilmember Cruz is not here this evening, but I know she's a chair of a couple committees, so we just want to make sure we don't lose her input as well.
Yeah, let's do it once.
Yeah. Good idea.
Well, what I wanted to bring up on the subcommittee reports is, you know, basically what we do is we just read when the next meeting is, as opposed to maybe hitting some of the highlights of projects that we're working on right now. I know a lot of times, a project is underway, and I personally like to give some input on it, and I don't have that opportunity until it's actually brought back. Whereas this way, if the committee's working on it and there's a project that the Finance, Police Subcommittee's working on it, Jason sees a couple of the bullet points that we're doing, he may give us some input at that point in time. So, I just want to get your thoughts on that. Would you like to just do maybe three bullet points per subcommittee to discuss at the city council meetings?
I have actually done that in the past, just put it in my written council report. You know, I would just put the, just the highlights of whatever happened at, you know, the airport, subcommittee meeting, or finance, and I just sort of left it off because I didn't think anybody was really responding to it. But I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to just put those in a, you know, in the council report ahead of time, and then if anybody wants, and we can, we can do it verbally or not, and if people have questions about it, then we can, we can discuss it at the council meeting. But I think it's more effective than just reading a date and time off every, every meeting.
I agree with you. Jason?
I like the idea of having a verbal option as well. It can be organic and just kind of get people's initial thoughts as we move forward in the subcommittee aspect.
I don't remember what happened yesterday, let alone a week ago, so if you're still young enough to do it off the top of your head, that's fantastic. But I'm not anymore, so. You've got to be in writing.
Then I'd like to propose that. Mary Ann, are you comfortable with that? I think you and I are together on the, what are we together on?
Planning.
Planning and sustainability.
But maybe the chair, maybe just say the chair is responsible.
Yeah, and at the end of the meeting, at the end of every subcommittee meeting, if it's not too much on Irene or Suzie, we could just say, here's the bullet points for the council meeting.
Oh.
And we could just get it out of the way right then and there.
Have it in the report from there.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay, and, you know, David, if you could solicit council members, Cruz's input on that topic as well.
Okay. And Mayor and council members, in that light, just in terms of the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee meeting tomorrow, a couple of important agenda items that ultimately will likely come back to council include a discussion about refunding the 2015 successor agency bonds at a lower interest rates, which would, under current calculations, generate pretty significant savings to all of the taxing entities, including the city, the school district, and the fire district. So, there's going to be a presentation tomorrow by Bond Council on that, along with our fiscal agent. Following that discussion, there's also going to be a presentation by Bond Council at Jones Hall regarding community facility districts. That's an important presentation to discuss how the city has the opportunity to establish a facility district to fund infrastructure and services. And then last but not least, there will also be a discussion and presentation by Sonoma Clean Power on a microgrid funding concept, which is something that has a lot of applicability to our resiliency strategy that we're developing. A lot of other items, but I'll leave it at three. So, those are kind of the three, the three big items that are on the, on the agenda for the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee meeting tomorrow.
Councilmember Turner?
So, I just have a question, and it's more of a clarifying, but if we follow the formula that's being discussed, where we kind of offer the three bullet points at the end of the subcommittee meeting, and they make it on the agenda, which is put up seven days in advance, are we, I mean, are we really allowed to get into some discussion over it without voting on a decision, so to speak? I mean, are we allowed to really get in the weeds kind of thing, or?
It would, it would really be kind of a quick, if the bullet points are on there, then you could actually start discussing the item. The thing is, if you're, if you're talking about past items, okay. If you're talking about future items, it kind of defeats the purpose of having your subcommittee meeting if you're discussing it here. That's the only thing.
Okay.
But if you have your bullet points and it's on the agenda, if there needed to be some clarification, a little more detail, that's definitely allowed if it's on the agenda.
But you wouldn't necessarily be like, well, I don't know why you're working on that, I don't support any of that?
Well, that would be, that would be a, that would be a fair comment if one of the council members felt like that.
Okay.
But, but it's really, I think it's meant, meant to kind of inform the council, hey, this is what's going on in the subcommittees, not only the council, but the public that maybe couldn't make the subcommittees. It's nice just for information.
Okay, thank you.
And it gives the subcommittee to take some form of direction from the rest of the council, you know, about moving in a different direction or including something that they didn't think of.
That's cool.
So, if everyone's in agreeance with that, maybe we can start doing it.
I agree.
So. With that being said, if there's no other agenda items, I'm going to see about getting us out of here by...
One, one future agenda.
Oh, yes.
Just wanted to give a heads up, I'm sorry. I've been working with the executive director of Russian River Rogershead Association, and since we are going to be entering into a new five-year permit period, he's just wanted to give everybody a heads up that he's going to come around and do a little dog and pony show about the background about the organization, the benefits that it provides, the money it saves the city, and, and just some, just some information so that the entire council and the staff are just aware of the benefits of this regional approach to addressing our permit requirements. And I just wanted to let the city manager know too that Andy's going to be calling you and getting on the calendar for probably, you know, like a 10 or 15-minute presentation, just, just so that you've got a heads up for that. That's it.
Okay. Staff, anything else? Thank you.
Mayor, council members, no other reports?
Okay, public, thank you. And meeting adjourned.